All right. Thanks, everybody, for coming today. In time, we're going to call our supervisors in order. It's March 2nd. Mr. Slade, would you give us a good prayer this morning?
Let's open with a word of prayer. I want to thank you for the privilege again of coming before you first and foremost. Father, prioritize your presence here with us today to invoke your blessing on our time together, Lord, to give these men everything that they need today, Lord, to do what you called them to do, the service that they engaged in. And we thank you for providing them the skills and the abilities, Lord, to do that and the willingness. I pray, Father, that you would bless their sacrifice and that of their families. I pray, Father, for our first responders, we always think about those guys, those ladies, Lord, who are out there working every single day to try to take care of us. Father, I pray that you just bless them, give them mercies today, Lord, and bring them home safely to their families, for we bear all this Jesus' name.
All right. First up, we have Byron. This is update, but she's not here, I don't think.
No.
All right. Mr. Hunter, you want to come on up?
Yeah.
Yeah, I see it. Tell everybody who you are and where you live.
Hello, my name is Brian Hunter. I live at 123 Post Oak Drive, Brandon, by the reservoir in Oak Grove neighborhood. I've, uh, I make a short and sweet, I believe I only have three minutes. I understand.
What's due?
I've been speaking with my supervisor, Mr. Dave Bishop, for a long time now about the ditch in my backyard. And I've met several roadblocks and tried to, who owns this ditch? Was it developer? And developer said he deeded the, all the land utilities and road back to Rankin County for this ditch. If you look at the folders, the ditch is eating my property. It's already taken up my back fence. My wife, who just moved here from Pennsylvania, her dog is unaware of the situation and just fell off the ditch and hurt his leg really bad. And, um, over the course of time, I'm becoming impatient, and I would like, with your supervisor's help, to please help me fix this problem.
We went out there last year, I think it was.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, this is exactly why I wanted to come up with a drainage district so that we can address some of these problems.
And it's off right away?
Yeah.
And sir, if I may, uh, the other neighbors, I included GPS pictures of that. The other neighbors, they, their property's lined straight on this ditch, whereas mine has this S curve. So I'm getting the water hitting from all sides, going straight into my backyard. Um, I realize that money might be an issue of fixes since tire ditch may be an extremely hard project, construction-wise. But if, at least if I can get my section fixed, so I would stop losing my fence. Eventually, if, let's say I've let this sit for five years from now, I'll probably be up to my back door.
Greg.
As of right now, it's just...
Greg, you got...
Can you help us, Greg?
I'd be glad to. I'd be glad. Yeah. Help is, uh, the operative word there. I can, I can help explain. Help is the, is a different equation altogether, Steve. The issue is not just money, it's legal authority and jurisdiction. And I'm fairly confident that, Mr. Hunter, you may remember my coming with Jay. I think we had a conversation in your driveway last year.
Yes, sir.
About the situation. The, um, the fact that the developer is claiming that Rankin County accepted it or took it or he transferred it, that's, that is not the case in any way, shape, form, or fashion. When we accept a subdivision, a planted subdivision, as you guys recall, we accept only the roads and the road rights of way. We don't accept off-road right-of-way easements, including drainage easements or anything like that. Whatever the developer is stating, as if it were fact, is simply not true. He did not transfer ownership or legal authority with respect to the ditch to Rankin County. We can't accept it, number one, by the state constitution nor by state law. We can only accept that which is in our legal jurisdiction, which is roads or bridges or ferries. We don't have very many of those left, but those are our three items of jurisdiction constitutionally. So what this means is that the developer is responsible, remains responsible unless it can be shown that the developer transferred the property that is the ditch to a third party like a homeowners association. That's possible that that was done. Sometimes developers will do that, uh, and if they're smart, they'll do that. But many times, what we find is that developers don't bother to actually transfer all of the common areas. They'll get some of them, but they, oftentimes, they'll fail to see some common areas. It would not surprise me if Mr. Hunter or somebody trying to help him with this, maybe an attorney, uh, would discover in the records that the developer did not, in fact, transfer legal ownership of the ditch. Okay? So the, the process to fix the problem, Jay alluded to one, but that's unfortunately, based on what we're seeing now, is some time away. And that is for the establishment of a district, a legal authority, that could then be impressed over these kinds of areas where you've got ditches that run through subdivisions. That's an option, but that's a long-term solution. It's way out there, and that, that district's got to be funded. And so there's several steps in that process that could happen eventually. So that's not really a viable one in the near term. The second option is for Mr. Hunter, through legal counsel, to pursue recovery from the person that actually has responsibility for the ditch, probably the developer. But that needs to be explored, uh, and I, I think I recall saying that as much last year when we met. I may not have been as clear, uh, when we met. So I'd be willing to accept some responsibility for, for there being a continuing issue with that. The, at the end of the day, the county does not have and cannot secure the legal authority to enter upon that ditch until it can be established, until it can be established, that the issues that Mr. Hunter is facing behind his house is, in fact, impacting the road or the road right-of-way. And that's what we went out to look at, to see, is there evidence that the issue with the ditch is affecting where the county's jurisdiction is? And at that time, there was no evidence that any damage was occurring. So there was nothing that we could do legally, right?
Is there a homeowner association?
No.
Yes, sir.
Yes and no.
Well, it is, but even if there's a situation like this, even if there is a homeowner association, they're not going to have the resources to pay for this, you know?
Typically not.
Yeah, but you would want, you know, we gotta, somebody's got to pay for it.
I mean, somebody, has anybody found out who owns that yet?
Sir, if I may, uh, nobody's claiming ownership. The developer, Nolan Palmer, has been deceased, but his son is still alive and had a hand in the neighborhood. His son is the one that told me he gave all the land back to Rankin County. But as far as every department, the MDEQ, um, Rankin County, the homeowner association, I even called Flowood Water, because there is a blue pipe, whatever blue pipe that is running through it in the pictures. Uh, I've called...
It looks like a water line, I guess.
I've called the, uh, Pearl River Valley Water District. Nobody claims ownership of this ditch, which brings me back to where the developer said that he gave the land back. Now, if you're an attorney, you might have more resources than I do, just going off of what he said. But, um, somebody's got to own this. I know I don't own the ditch.
It's common.
And I know this ditch is destroying my land.
Right. So the representatives...
Where's his property line go?
Sir?
Does his property line go into the ditch?
No, sir, it, it ends right at it, sir.
So, kind of like a regular creek, wherever that ditch goes, it basically be your, you could lose or gain property.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. We have this problem, and, I mean, I feel for you, but I'm just saying, I, I know an area that they have lost the fence and have had to move the, uh, kid's swing set closer to the house because of the erosion. Same situation, um, same situation, it's just, it's, I don't know what the answer is without like Mr. Bishop saying.
Sir, if I was to go fix this myself and end up ruining something, would I not be charged for destruction of property, whoever owns this? Let's say that, let's say I accidentally, I'm trying to fix this problem and that water pipe gets destroyed. Would I not get in trouble?
I would not charge you.
Well, I'm saying, well...
But it's not us. I don't know who, I don't think that's...
So let's say I accidentally bust that water line or something. Someone's going to come out there and say, hey, you've done this, you messed up this whole thing. I, I can't fix it.
I would follow Greg's advice, and that is find out who owns it. And just because somebody tells you they gave it to the county, I mean, I could go down and file it, try to file a quick claim deed or put it in my file and say, I'm done with it, but that don't mean the county takes it.
That's correct.
Well, like I said, the only thing, going off of what the developer's son, which has been deceased.
I'm sure he don't want...
I would find out.
I'm not even sure how to find out.
It's, it's through, again, the, the issue is that you need representation. The county can't provide that. You've got an issue that's apparently impacting your property. I believe you, I've seen it. Uh, that, that is a private matter between private citizens, you, your property, and the developer or his representatives. Though, that's where the claims lie. The county's not involved in that. We provide a courthouse, but, so the answer is secure legal counsel to help you determine, how can I require, how can I legally require the person who is responsible? Number one, find out who they are, and then make them fix it. There is a process to do that.
I understand, sir. Again, the developer is deceased. His company is no longer there. His son was like six years old when he made it.
I understand.
I don't know who to sue.
Yeah.
The developer, the company's not there, and the man is deceased.
You, you sue his estate. That's the defendant.
Well, that's a dead end, you know? So basically, what they're telling you is you're screwed, you know? You paid for it, fix it yourself, or it's not getting done. Kind of like me, that's what's going on.
All right. Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you. All right, next, we have our minutes.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Thorsten, taken by Calhoun. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, aye. It's in the agenda.
Some move.
Second.
Approve. Uh, Daniel, taken by Jared. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Aye, aye. Mr. Sullivan.
All right, I'll make a motion on items A and B for Mr. Sullivan to approve. It is nice of me. It's a kind new person this year. That's good of me.
Motion by Daniel, taken by Steve. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, aye.
Good job, John.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My first item this morning, I'm requesting approval of copier contracts with Rico Incorporated before the Chancery Court and the Circuit County Court.
Some move.
Motion by Daniel.
Second.
Taken by Steve. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
And the next item is, um, question that would declare, um, Axon Enterprises Incorporated as sole source for Taser brand products.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Daniel.
Second.
Taken by Steve. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
And the final thing, I'm requesting authority to advertise for bids for an emulsion truck.
Yep, some move.
Second. By Daniel, taken by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Thank you, Mr. Hager.
I make motion to approve. Roadwork accomplished, February, uh, 2020, and roadwork scheduled March 2020.
Second.
Motion by Jared, taken by Steve. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. I'd like to take B and C AT&amp;T utility permits.
B and C together? Together, Mike?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. I make motion to...
Second.
Approve.
Motion by Jared to approve. Would you say B and C?
Yeah.
Yeah.
B and C, uh...
Taken by Brad. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Aye, aye. I want a discussion.
Before it?
Is this...
No, sir.
Does it not have any impact on, uh, Andrew Chap, that part of Andrew Chap?
That part of Andrew Chap, yes. It's on the other side of...
Aye.
And then, uh, D and E, the ceasefire fiber laying on, uh, Panland and, uh, North, North Shore Parkway.
Yes, some move.
Motion by Daniel, taken by Jared.
We've, we've got our inspectors in place and everything like we want it.
Yes, sir. So far, everything's going pretty good right now on it.
Aye.
They're putting it where we need it, and we hadn't had no problem. We had to change a little bit on some depths and, you know, subdivision, just because it was getting to be a safety issue there, but, uh, everything's working good right now, Steve.
Okay.
The inspectors have helped out, keep them in the right lane.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Hey, was that just item D? I'm sorry.
D and E.
D and E, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
D and E.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Mr. Parker.
I don't know how to take that, pushing it up, waving them chairs.
I don't know. I'm gonna take some kind of compliment, I don't know what. Mr. President...
I know how Laura was taking it. I got, yeah, go ahead.
The first item we have on the agenda is Freedom Farms, and we're recommending the approval of the final plat. That's District Four.
Everything's good.
Everything's good.
New easement to...
We, we have the required necessary right-of-way on Stoll Road and Stump Ridge, uh, the plat notes, if those are gravel roads, ram gravel, there's no...
And we have no, uh, current plans for that to change.
That's correct.
It will be gravel until further down the road. Okay.
Tim, to assist us in kind of getting a better idea of what's going on out there, you know, I know there's a lot of subdivisions being built, and I know we have a lot of gravel roads. We've done some improvements. Could you, uh, map for us the, what subdivisions are, are coming in or what we have in the works on those gravel roads, what improvements we have made, so we'll know what, what future's looking like?
Yes, sir. So you're wanting, uh, subdivisions that are under construction or in the approval process that are on gravel roads?
Or just in that area, the stall?
Absolutely.
One of the stall?
Well, not everywhere. Probably just in my area.
But we don't have a lot of other developers on gravel roads.
Oh, oh, okay. There's no other gravel, no other gravel roads in the United States. I got one. Yes, sir, we can certainly produce that.
I mean, I know we got Indian mound.
We got some real now, but other than that, I think...
Absolutely.
Just give us an idea. I know we've done some improvements recently.
What are you talking about?
We've done some asphalt out there on some gravel road last year or so.
Yeah, quarter mile.
I'm just saying, yeah. So I know we've, we've got probably some more to do, don't we?
We, we, under the bond, we have a mile.
Right. But with all these developments coming, we probably need to kind of plan ahead.
I would sure like to, if you'll help me with it.
We've got some MPO projects coming.
Come on. Yeah, do that, Tim. Yes, sir. We'll take care of it.
You think, you just think I'm angling against you or something?
I think, yeah.
I was kind of wondering how it was going too, Dave.
We got these people building 300 to $600,000 houses and I tell them it's a gravel road and it, and we, you know, we have no method right now of making it anything but a gravel road.
Yeah. I like fixing drainage problems.
Well, it is a county gravel road. It has been a county gravel road forever.
Yeah.
And people, and people live, I mean, there's people that actually have lived there forever too.
I'm going to make motions to approve.
And they're buying lots on the gravel road.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Steve to approve.
Second.
Taken by Brad. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Aye, aye.
The next item B is on Mill Creek subdivision drainage improvements. We recommend an approval of pay request application number five in the amount of $99,630.30 to utility constructors and authority to issue the check.
Yeah, I'll make that motion to do that, but did you, did y'all get my email on that, uh...
I did.
Storm drainups collapsing, they thought, not collapsing, I'm sorry, sinkholes that were forming around it?
Yeah. Basically, we, we talked about that with the contractor on Thursday, and he was going to get somebody out there. Uh, I think what's happening is water was standing around it and the compaction, it's just settled some, uh, but the contractor was going to, uh, get any inlet and look and make sure we didn't have anything that needed, uh...
Our local weatherman called me.
I, I saw the...
And, uh, he felt like it was a sinkhole on, on our part and wanted somebody to come out and take a look at it.
Yes, sir.
So...
We're in the process of, I'm not sure if they got out there Friday, but they'll be out there, should be out there first of the week.
I think his weather predictions were off, so it kind of got him mixed up a little bit, so...
I get it.
Now that we're back on pace there, so if we can check on that.
Yes, sir.
All right. We have motion by Daniel to approve.
Second.
Taken by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Aye, aye.
The last item I have, Mr. President, is on State Aid Project SAP 62117M. That's the ten-road overlay. Uh, it's, it's been complete for quite some time. We've just been waiting on State Aid to go through all the test reports and, uh, issue their final acceptance, so we have a board order, and we recommend an approval of the board order and joint acceptance letter and authority to sign those documents.
All right.
Some move.
Motion by Daniel. Being none of them are on my gravel roads, I guess I might even say...
You're not going to vote for it?
No. Not going to second it. I'll vote for it. All right, I'll second it. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, Greg.
Yes, sir.
We're making such good headway, I'm going...
Hey, Craig.
Yes, sir.
Before you start...
Yes, sir.
And we're running a little bit ahead of schedule, I'd like to recognize Larry Spring tie.
Look at him.
He's, he may be the only man here with a board tie today.
That is St. Patrick's Day right there, coming our way.
A spring break tie right there.
Here's me, yes, spring break. Absolutely. Yes. Very helpful.
And Ms. Lewis has her spring hat on, too.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Excellent.
Oh, John got it. I'm sorry, John.
Getting out there now, huh?
All right, we're done. I don't know.
Okay. That probably fixed us being ahead of time, didn't it?
Chuck's got, all this tape will be...
All right. All right. Uh, first item under my section is, uh, items A and B. If I could indulge, getting those set together to the same day, March 16, 2029 AM. Those are both public hearings.
Make motion to set this public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Jared, taken by Brad. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Uh, item C is a lengthy, um, minute entry.
Yeah.
That's for the purpose of documenting for the record. This is the HAVA money. You're authorizing the procurement of the election equipment that has been authorized by the Secretary of State's office and certified as reimbursable through the HAVA approach. We have to order, acquire, and pay for the property, and then the Secretary of State will remit a reimbursement to us for that purchase. That's what that whole thing is right there.
Okay. Motion. Motion by Steve to approve.
Second.
Taken by Daniel. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Aye, aye.
Mr. President, under my section, I have one item to add with your indulgence. This would be adding, uh, the, the acknowledgement of receipt of identical quotes for the purchase of an inflatable shelter for our EOC operations, uh, and so that's what I would like to add, is your consideration of that.
Some move.
Motion by Daniel.
Second.
Taken by Brad. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Aye, aye.
That adds it?
Yes, sir, that adds it. This item is acknowledgement of receipt of identical quotes for the purchase of some sort of identified inflatable shelter with master blaster hose kit. Uh, this is through the Losberger DeBoer Company, um, I believe they're out of California, if I remember correctly. I don't remember exactly where they're from.
They're on...
Oh, no, East Coast, never mind, forget it. Both, both of the quotes that we got were in identical amounts, $30,203, and so we're acknowledging that the Losberger DeBoer quote contains significant detail outlining additional items that will be supplied to Rankin County with the requisitioned equipment, along with details regarding shipping dates and other matters. And so your determination would be that the Losberger DeBoer quote is the best, the lowest and the best quote as contemplated by the bid law.
Word. Give him about a two-minute rendition of this thing. You're going to like this right here.
If you'll recall, on our big flooding event we had, we had a, uh, one of these shelters,
um, obviously, this thing is, uh, somewhere in the neighborhood of 20 years old, it's deteriorated, it actually busted, we couldn't use it anymore.
No.
Um, and what this thing is, is just a portable, uh, takes about three or four guys to set it up, can set it up in about six minutes, uh, used, obviously, for rehabilitation of firefighters on big scenes, we can use it on hazmat scenes, any of our civic things that we've got, such as the Pearl Days, the Flowood Days for cooling shelters, things of that nature, uh, for our seniors, uh, obviously, any natural disasters, uh, to be able to set up a, a portable command center, or, uh, such as we were trying to use it the other day, had a place to be able to feed the 150-some-odd responders that we had, uh, just trying to[1494.86] had a place to be able to feed the 150 some odd responders that we had, uh, just trying to get them out of the rain. And the, the one that we had is deteriorated to the point you can't use it anymore, so, um, this is a replacement.
How big is it?
It's in the budget. It is about 660 square feet.
How old's the one we had?
I'm gonna say somewhere between 15 and 20 years old. And this is a, uh, this is a military-grade tent, extremely, extremely thick. I've got personal experience with this, with this name brand of tents, and, uh, I, I put them up and set them down every single weekend for seven months out of the year, for almost 10 years. And, uh, just unbelievable, unbelievable quality on them.
You said it's in the budget, in your budget?
Yes, sir. No, no additional monies whatsoever.
I just couldn't do that any justice. I mean, I was gonna simply take a blow-up tent and put people underneath, but the extreme he's gonna go through to explain it.
Well, it's, it's not a jumpy jump, as you say, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, make sure that's clear, it's not like you're buying an inflatable.
All right, I make a motion.
All right, motion by Steve to approve.
Second.
Second by Daniel, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
See how good he did, he went like a minute and 40 seconds right there, you know?
He was in good butter.
He's feeling good.
Been slow to get to it.
He's coming back.
That's all I had under my section, gentlemen. I do believe we have an executive session today.
All right, Ms. Law.
Thank you. The first item I have this morning is the re-roofing project for the DHS and its approval of pay application number four to M&amp;S Roofing in the amount of $4,552.51 and authority to issue that check.
Motion.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Jared, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye, sir.
The next item is-
Daniel wins one, uh, one vote to the-
The re-roofing project for the, uh, EOC Center, pay application number two, M&amp;S Roofing in the amount of $21,660 and authority to issue that check.
Some move.
Motion by Jared, second by Brad, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye, sir.
And the last item I have is authority to purchase one used 2012 Chevrolet Tahoe. You see the VIN number there, and this is from the Missouri Highway Patrol, and it's in the amount of $14,500.
Can I have that one? Oh, no, I was going to the Sheriff's Department, didn't I? Okay, a motion.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Daniel, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, sir. All right, any additional business?
No. Hey, can I ask Mike, and I know I'm going backwards, on this roofing of the building that he's in? The roof, re-roofing on that building that you're in?
Yes, sir.
We, we did vote to put the new, uh-
Sofit.
Whatever.
Sofit.
Was it sofit? I thought it was actually a-
Stucco.
Around the top, there was a three or four foot-
Yes.
Area-
Yes, and that has been-
Had been deteriorated or, and we were debating, we are doing it.
Yes, sir, it's, it's already done. What they're doing now, and I believe you guys approved this last week, was the, uh, to repair the, uh, the stucco.
Yeah.
Once that's done, or did you, you didn't? All right, then it's not. Then they will be, uh, they'll be ready to hang up the, uh, all the downspouts.
Downspouts, the sofits and stuff.
When can we meet again? Two weeks?
That's the reason the downspouts have not been hung up.
Do we need to address that?
The 16?
It'd probably be easier to do that stucco now before they put them spouts up.
They gotta wait till they put-
Carl, we didn't approve that the other day, did we? Thursday, that paint or do the sealer or whatever?
I don't think we did, I don't think we-
The stucco finish.
Start fixing, repairing the stucco spots and then flashing the whole building.
We talked about it.
I don't think we approved it.
I thought we did, too. I thought we did. I think we did.
I don't remember, because Carl just told us about it. I don't remember.
We added it to the agenda? Oh, it was, okay.
Over here, and what he was talking about on this other roof, y'all are talking about doing with the, uh, he's talking about doing the same thing he did with ours on the flat roof, putting some pitch to it and kicking it off.
Yeah.
Let me tell you, it is a tremendous difference with the rain that we've had, unreal. Uh, and he actually brought that pitch up, um, it, over the wall, it used to come up to my waist, and now it's just below my knee, so it's got a really good pitch on it with that styrofoam, and it's, it doesn't have the downspouts on it yet, but in the hard rain, it was kicking, because it runs straight off the roof and straight out to the ground.